Regular meeting. Ms. Benitez, will you take the role?
Certainly Chairman. Commissioner Adam will not be here. Commissioner Capolongo?
Present.
Commissioner Pro?
Present.
Vice Chair Frost?
Present.
Chairman Pronzo?
Present.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Benitez, the minutes are not ready?
They are not. I've got the recording from the machine just yesterday, so they are not ready for review yet.
Okay, then we will go past that. I'm going to change the order in which we are approaching the agenda and go right to new business. Presentation, public hearing, recommendation of approval, approval with conditions or denial of a conditional use permit for the RV storage project by McCrichie Storage Ventures, and I apologize if I butchered that name, represented by Kimbley Horn. Do we have a presentation?
We have a presentation. We also have the applicant here who is, who wishes to say something first.
Sir?
Or the representative of the applicant.
Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Taylor Earl, here on behalf of the applicant, McCrichie.
Yeah, can I have an interview?
Oh, well?
No, we will have quiet.
I can lean in like this, I guess.
Please.
I'm too tall. So, we filed our application and we had a neighborhood meeting on Monday evening, and there were concerns raised by members in attendance at the meeting, and also, we had received communications that were given to the town expressing concern and questions. And so, as we expressed in that meeting, that we would be seeking a continuance tonight of the hearing in order to be able to take the feedback that night and then be able to take it to our client and see what, address the concerns and get answers to questions that were asked that we didn't have answers to at the time. And so, we mentioned that in our neighborhood meeting, and so, our request tonight is that we continue for a month, so that would put us at May 19th, in order to give us time to work with the client and the design team, in order to look at the questions and concerns that were raised by members of the community, see what we can address, get answers for members of the community that we couldn't answer. We just felt like that would be more appropriate, and so, that's the reason for the continuance, is to try to work with the community.
Well, thank you, sir. Before we vote on the continuance, we don't normally play it to such a full house, so obviously, there are opinions that some people would like to express. So, I am going to open it up to the public, but I warn you, we really don't need the redundancy. State the point, the valid point. We're listening, we're very interested in what you have to say. After all, this is our home. But when it gets ridiculous, I will cut it off. So, at this time, we will open up to the public for public comment on this issue and this issue only.
Mr. Chair, Cliff Matice, I, could we clarify if we're, so the applicant knows if you're going to be opening the public hearing, or, the chair doesn't have to ask for a motion to continue, but if you're going to debate a motion to continue, or you're going to open the public hearing?
It's my intention to open up to the public for two reasons. First, the amount of people who have shown an interest, and secondly, to allow us to decide whether we're going to issue a contingency or not. So, at this time, it is open to the public. If anyone would like to address the commission, please do so at this time.
Please state your name and address, right?
Please state your name and address.
Tabitha McPhee, 8499 West Congressional Way.
Make sure you're close to the microphone. Sorry.
Do I need to be closer?
Yes.
You're going to have to listen for me.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Tabitha McPhee, 8499 West Congressional Way, Florence, 85132.
Yes ma'am.
So, I comprised a couple of questions. My husband and I are homeowners over on the Sycamore side of DR, the DR Horton side of Parkside. Some of our concerns are, first, we know the facility isn't going to be bringing or generating jobs to our residents. We would like to know if the revenue from this business will be significant enough for the town, so that they can do things such as increase the police budget, so we can hire some more officers. Second, we'd like to state that we do, in researching, we saw that this particular parcel on the northwest corner of Ataway and Hunt Highway was zoned the same, so we are curious to, if there's a possibility that the facility could be moved there, as there's some industrial stuff down Ataway, so we thought that maybe that would be a better place for that to Third, is there a plan to widen the road on Merrill Ranch, right there? We have, majority of us who live over there have children, and they had to move the bus stop from the corner of Camden and Merrill Ranch, because the bus could not maneuver that turn very well. So, my, our thoughts are, our RVs, the size of buses, if not larger, going to be able to maneuver that area without widening the road. And fourth, we would like to know, as we attended the meeting on Monday, the plan is to have six-foot walls around the business. If this is something that's going to move forward, we are proposing that they build higher walls, so that it's more of a deterrent for people to get over those walls, to prevent vandalize them, sorry, vandalism and theft, because, as my husband works for the town, we see a lot of the storage stuff downtown isn't with the six-foot walls. There's a lot of problems with the theft and vandalism down there, so we don't want to see the same thing happen up there, especially if people are spending all this money on RVs to park there, in addition to rent. That's it, that's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? Name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Bob Duberry, live at 7358 West Trent Way, Florence, Arizona. That's Sun City Anthem, Merrill Ranch. I'm opposed to this completely. I guess I have a question for the commission. Has there been any kind of environmental impact study, traffic impact study, or anything done? You're going to bring nothing but more traffic into the area. So, the young lady talked about possible vandalism related to motor homes sitting there for days and maybe months at a time. The dump site, I assume there's been some study done on what happens if that thing leaks, gets into the ground? Little history, I moved here to try to get away from the zoo, okay? I'm from Southern California, left there 13 years ago, and now the zoo's coming to me, so I'm 100% against it. So, I just hope you guys can look forward as to what's going to happen, secondary, not primary? You know, is there that many people in the greater Florence community that need a place to park their RV? Or are we just making it convenient for some LLC to come in and make some money? And everybody that has their motor homes in three different cities are going to be coming to our neighborhood to drop off their motor homes and then go out of there, because they don't want the zoo around their house? So, just, you spoke, sir, is it your home? I guess my question to you, if this RV park was going to be 800 yards from your house, would that be something you'd be all in for? So, just understand, there's a fair number of us, and I'll be honest, I just found about, found out about this thing this morning, so I believe there's a lot of people that are not aware of it at all. So, I think that, you know, you gotta, I'm not against progress, believe me, as long as it doesn't affect me. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman and fellow commissioners, my name is Darrell Cox. I live at 4107 North Hawthorne Drive, Florence. It's the Sun City Anthem Merrill Ranch community. My wife and I moved here about two years ago, and we searched all over East Valley for a home, and we didn't find a community that we thought was aesthetically pleasing, something we felt safe, something that was very attractive. We found Anthem as the best place in this East Valley. The worst thing that you could do is put an RV parking lot in the entrance to Sun City Anthem, which is already one of the most beautiful entries of all the subdivisions I've seen in East Valley, truly. And you want to put an RV spot, an RV parking lot, where people want to park their junk? I'm sorry, that's just going to eat up the property values, and that's money in my pocket, it's money in everybody in my neighborhood's pocket. So, it's an eyesore, it's a bad idea, and trust me, there's plenty of other locations, I've seen this area, where you could stick an RV parking lot instead of the middle of a premier subdivision. I am totally opposed, if you didn't get that impression. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Chipman. I live at 4305 North Petersburg in Anthem, Florence, we know that. I attended the meeting earlier this week with this gentleman over here, and then I read a lot of the documentation that has been submitted, and there are just things that don't match, and things that I think that you should look into a lot further. For example, this letter from Kimbley Horn indicates that all of the places will be covered, that the Ramada type of thing, it's not an enclosed position, but they're all going to be covered, yet, at the meeting the other night, we were talking maybe 100 or 150 of the 630, whatever it is, were going to be covered, not all of them. Most of them would be covered in the first phase, but as I understood it, not any were going to be covered in the second phase. The modular home that they talk about, that they're going to have for an office, they're going to have that there until they fill the lot up. Well, if you think of a storage lot, the lot is never filled, people are coming and going. So, basically, that's saying that you're going to have a modular there forever. Another thing that bothers me a bit, well, no, it bothers me a lot, is that we're looking at two wash stations for RVs, plus two sewage damp sta, dump stations. And if we think of what a dump station is, anybody with an RV, you know, you're going and you're dumping the bad stuff right there, and there's nothing that says it's going to be just for the people that are using that lot. This is a public dump station, and I don't know if that's something that we want in the area. The thought of a storage place and the point that we have a critical shortage, I don't find that to be a case at all. We have all sorts of storage out on Arizona Farm Road. There's a large facility between the two railroad tracks. The church was offering about 200 storage spaces, but somebody that was, somebody went to the county and complained about it, so now they're having to cut it back to about 30 or 40. We also have a brand-new, the famous coming-soon storage facility just north of Magic Ranch, that's about to open up, I think, and they have storage in there for RVs. We have a storage facility right up by Fry's, we have them all, there are a number of them all over the place, so I don't think that there's a critical shortage. I would welcome these people, I would welcome them to, for another storage facility, because there are people that we've heard from in the Anthem area alone, that say that they need more space to store everything. And understand, we're not just talking about storing RVs. A storage lot, if you drive by and look at any of them, there are RVs in it, there are trailers in it, there's everything you can imagine is stored in there. So, it's not going to be just RVs. The thought that it will not have any effect on the people around there is not true. We go down to Valentino's and sit and watch the sun go down, and have a glass of wine, maybe two, but at the same time, you're not going to get to see the same thing now with that storage lot there. It's something that's different that you're going to look at. I would welcome them to come, I would encourage them to find a place, but I just think that at the entry to a premier building, development, where you bring people in, this is what the first thing they see, I don't think you want it to be a storage lot. I think that you need to build this someplace other than at the entry. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kathy DeRosa. I reside in Sun City at 7737 West Noble Prairie Drive in Florence. I have three questions for the Planning Commission for you to consider. One, is this the highest and best use of the land that, where this project will be for the town of Florence? Two, how does this fit into the future vision for economic development for the town of Florence, so that we may maintain the quality of life and be able to provide for services here in the community for now and in the future? And three, have you considered the unintended consequences that this project will have on the impact of the community as a whole? Please give those considerations as you make your determination and decision, and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Westlin, I'm 6350 West Sandpaper in Sun City Anthem. Think it's pretty simple, two things here. This is not the best use for the land that we have there. There's about 4,000 homes, I estimate, in that area, and we're in need for health cares, facilities, for other buildings that would contribute to the tax base. They're more vital to the population we have out there. We have a population shift from downtown Florence out there. We have elderly people that are in need of services, so I wish you to consider that. I've been here three years, and I got the feeling that a lot of things are, I would say, kind of rubber stamped for the business climate around here, which is good. We all appreciate jobs and stuff. This is not going to create jobs for anyone besides the construction. We need to consider the welfare of the citizens. We're important here. This is just as important as business. We have to put that in our mindset as we go forward here, and I encourage you to think of that in your vote, the welfare of the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to interrupt at this point. We've talked about security, traffic, widening the road, aesthetics, how the facility is covered, dumping, economic impact, highest and best use. Unless you have something important to contribute that's not a part of that list, please spare us, because we do take this serious, we do do our due diligence, and we understand your concern. At this point, if you have something more to contribute, please do.
I'm Greg Sunday. I live at 6010 West Don Quay Way, Sun City, beautiful Florence, Arizona.
I remember you, sir.
I remember you. It was a pleasure meeting all of you a couple of weeks ago. For loss of terms, I want to say that I believe Florence, using the old term, is going to be the cat's meow. People are going to want to live here. You've heard us, people say it's prime real estate, and we're going to build a parking lot on prime real estate.
Reminds me of a song.
Yeah. My concern is, more people are going to get use out of that property if there's medical arts facilities, restaurants, shops, and not only that, the economic impact is, they're going to hire people. A lot of our young people are going to need jobs, young people here are going to need jobs. You know, it's going to add to it, and the aesthetics, do we want to be attractive? Do we want a place where people want to live or not? I believe the future, my wife and I moved here from Cincinnati, Ohio. We've put our heart and soul into our home, probably as everybody here has. We've got a vested interest in our community, because we love it. And I believe the future of Arizona is bright, really bright. I don't believe this adds to that brightness, I believe it takes away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Paul Burnson, I live at 8145 West Cinderbrook Way at Merrill Ranch, Sun City Anthem. One thing we haven't talked about is taxes. Our homes are taxed probably at one of the highest levels in Pennella County, and I don't think that an RV park at our front door is going to enhance paying any more taxes. In fact, I would argue that they would probably devalue our property somewhat. So, I'm against that.
Is there anyone else? Let's make this the last one, please.
Does that mean you save the best for last?
Can you speak up, sir?
Does that mean you, sir, save the best for last?
Well, that's what I was told, you were.
I just want to raise one point, that when I heard about this, we don't have a family. We're here, as most of the people here are, in Anthem, and there's more years behind us than ahead of us, but the huge majority of houses, it seems like, in this area are family housing, and they have children. And to put a, that type of a facility right in the middle of a beautiful community that's being developed for families who have kids, who are going to have, who will walk past, that property can be so much better used to put some kind of family-oriented businesses, activities, and not a RV facility that's going to be bringing in traffic. I don't know what kind of folks will be coming back and forth, and frankly, some of them probably won't take care of their rigs quite as well as they ought to. So, please consider not allowing this at this point, and developing an infrastructure that orients itself towards families. We've got a new car, tire store, we got a car wash coming in, we got a gas station. Nothing is oriented towards families, and I feel very strongly that something like that, those should be taken into consideration by you folks on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sir, sir, before you, the best guy in the room, we didn't get your name.
My name's Jim Blanchard. I live at 3854 North San Marin Court, Florence, Arizona.
Thank you, sir. I don't think that's a good idea. We're asking them to vote. I think they all... Okay, I'm going to close to the public. Before we vote, I think a few words are appropriate. Florence, aside from what's happening along Hunt Highway in the Anthem area, Florence has had its share of difficulty attracting serious developers, serious investors, particularly in the commercial area. The applicant has an investment, both in time and money, to bring the project to us. So, on that basis, and believe me, we have listened to everything you've said, but in all fairness to this applicant and applicants that will come after him, I am going to move that we allow the continuance of, lost my paper, PG 22-22. All those in favor?
You need a second, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, I need a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have one nay and three positives. Let's move on. Before everybody gets up and leaves, because of rest... Mr. Chair? I'd like to know how many of you in this room have reviewed or read the general plan that's being proposed? That is impressive. Thank you. That is our next feature.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's been deathly still in here at the previous meeting, so it's nice to see people taking an interest in what's going on.
Okay, moving along.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, so before people leave, is the intent that it's continued to the May 19th meeting?
I can't hear you.
Oh, yes, the May 19th.
May 19th is the intent for the meeting, but just so everyone knows, okay.
Did you hear that?
So, just so everyone knows, this continuance will be on May 19th, Thursday.
Right, as the applicant proposed.
So, the continuance means the hearing will continue with the commission that day, and that day, we will make, the commission will make a decision. May 19th, 6:00 PM.
No RV storage, no RV storage. No RVs, no RV storage.
So, you guys are doing it under the next item?
Yes, they go under that.
There's two sides, right? I'm trying. But you're no rules.
Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to continue the meeting, so if you'd like to visit, why please go out into the foyer, so that we can continue the meeting?
Thank you. At this time, all business, presentation, public hearing, recommendation of approval, approval with conditions, denial of the Town of Florence General Plan 2022.
Go ahead. Okay, well, thank you, Chair and fellow commissioners. It's great to be back before you to talk more about the general plan update. As you all know...
I'm going to interrupt you at this point.
Certainly, Chair.
Are we doing a full-blown again?
We are not doing a full-blown. I will have a very similar presentation, because tonight is the second of two required public hearings. So, I do have a very similar presentation, but my comments are going to be much... So I do have a very similar presentation, but my comments are going to be much more abbreviated, given that we have discussed this in our previous meeting. So I will go through the similar slides, but I'm going to be very expeditious. And then I will pause at the end to discuss some of the comments you shared last time, to address how those were considered, and I hope that that meets your expectations.
Great.
Okay, well then, moving forward. So as a refresher for those who may be with us for the first time, this was a multi-year process that involved, along with it, multiple tasks and phases. And all of that was supported by detailed and robust public engagement. Because we all lead to ultimately, if approved by the council, this general plan will be put on the November 2022 ballot for ratification. So that's all that we're working up to here, is this process was very involved because it ultimately requires the participation of the public to approve it. And so their comments and feedback was very important. So as I talked about, public outreach, that involved many different things. Not only just developing a website and having in-person meetings, but we had virtual open house meetings because of the pandemic and to reach more residents within the community. We certainly conducted work sessions with the commission and council to discuss items in public as well. We put out a community survey that was open over the entire length of the process, as well as conducting the two-month state-mandated 60-day review process. Now, that 60-day review process is a point in time where we actually put the plan down, push it out to adjacent communities, as well as public agencies and the general public overall, to see if there's any comments after going through all of that public outreach. Are there any more comments that we need to address? So you can see on the slide here that feedback within that 60-day review was not too robust in terms of, we had a total of 26 responses for the entire general plan. That is very low. And so what that tells us is that the general plan was hitting the mark with the public in many ways. But of those comments, we did try to incorporate those ones that were provided that worked and were consistent with the feedback that we received through the life of the development of the general plan itself. Now, as we get into the actual structure of the general plan, the current general plan is organized in a very specific way. If you see on the left-hand side, it has an overall vision statement and then individual elements. Those elements or topics are specific chapters in the plan that the way the current general plan is set up, those individual chapters or topics are very siloed. They have their own individual goals, their own individual policies. And many of those chapters don't necessarily cross-pollinate to the other chapters of the document. That is something that we saw as an opportunity to hopefully improve with this update. So you can see on the revised structure of the general plan, we still preserve that overall vision statement. Like any successful effort, we do need an overall viewpoint of what are we working towards. So we preserve that vision statement. But we also continue to maintain those individual elements or topics that are required for the plan to address. But the unique aspect of this plan compared to previous plans is that we developed universal community goals. So rather than have individual goals from chapter to chapter that may not speak to each other, now the general plan is focused along universal goals. And then we identify in each chapter how the policies that address that specific chapter or topic roll up to achieve those goals. So now the plan is all in sync, that we can start to see how all the pieces fit together and hopefully build on each other to reach the overall vision of the plan. And you can see the specific seven goals that were developed through the public outreach process on the screen there. Now, I keep talking about the individual elements and topics of the plan. And this slide outlines how those are laid out within the overall document. So one of the things we looked at is, from the start, we really saw how the community is about our town and our future. So the plan was then organized to play off of that, our community, our infrastructure, and our prosperity. So within those, we have the specific topics that in certain instances, the ones that have stars, are required by state statute. The ones that are not starred are elective elements. So those are elements that Florence has raised their hand and said, hey, this is important to our community. While we aren't required to do it, we want to have these topics in the plan as well. So with those, you see in the parentheses, the policies. And that's what I was speaking to, that within each individual element and topic, we have specific policies that can be used to help guide decision-making in the community. But then those policies are actually put into a table in the document, and I apologize for the size here, but it's really intended to show the composition of the plan, how within each chapter, we have the individual policies that help guide decision-making along with the overarching community goals across the top. So then we're able to identify what policies help to address each specific goal. So we really start to see how of all these goals that we identified, these individual policies in each chapter are going to continue to carry our vision forward. Now, when we talk about the general plan, one of the things that is most synonymous with it is the land use plan. One of the things that go into that land use planning effort is the planning area. So for those who may not be familiar, every city, as we know, has a municipal boundary. That is what defines the actual governmental limits of the community. But within Arizona, we also have, every community has a planning area. That planning area is the boundary that a city could ultimately grow to. They would have to annex all that land into the city. But those areas in the planning area are identified with land uses in order to plan for future growth, so that we're not just looking, when we talk about the general plan, the municipal limits of the city. We're also talking about some of the areas surrounding the city that Florence could ultimately annex in the future. So when we were looking at that planning area, some of the things that were clear is that we reduced the planning area in the northern portion of the Florence overall area in order to respond to some of the growth aspects that were occurring in Queen Creek. But we also expanded the planning area in the southern portion of Florence in order to capture universally, rather than cutting off some of the rural neighborhoods in that region, to holistically capture them into the planning area so that it could be viewed as one complete piece. Now, specifically talking about land uses, one of the other unique things about this general plan update is the current general plan utilizes individual land use types to define where specific development might go within the planning area. Those specific development types are really related to one specific use. And they end up actually identifying more land use types than we have zoning. And really, our zoning is what is intended to guide specific development. The general plan is supposed to identify what is the look, feel, and character of areas that we want to achieve. And then we let the zoning specifically define where exact uses and types of uses are located. So what we introduced into this general plan is this notion of place types. Place types actually define a character of a specific area and identify multiple uses that might be appropriate within that character context. So within, for example, the suburban neighborhood place type, which is the predominant place type within the planning area, we would actually see not only residential development, but you might see commercial development in that, in those areas in order to service those residential uses. So we identify specific place types within the planning area, but we also preserve some specialized, very specific land uses. So we have, obviously, our correctional facilities. We have the military reservation and open space. Those are very specific land uses that we preserved, and you can see reflected on the land use plan. And then of importance, we also have land use overlays that are preserved and have historically been a very key component of the general plan. And so we carried those land use overlays forward in this general plan update. Now, one of the things for clarity, while the place types is a very effective way to prepare a general plan, to help guide the growth of the community, there are needs to also make sure that we're not placing uses within each of those areas in a way that might negatively impact adjacent development. So one of the other things that is specific about these place types that does not exist in the current general plan is we identify what the intent of the place type is, what the zoning classifications that might be appropriate in that, and the types of uses that might exist. But we also have very explicit development policies, all listed here, that strictly help to guide where specific types of developments should or could occur in that place type. So it doesn't say that just because commercial is allowed in this place type, that it can go anywhere, that it has to be a certain size and be located along certain types of roadways in order to ensure that we're mitigating negative impacts to existing and future developments. Now, the other aspect that was very important to the overall process is water. We under, we recognize water is very important in Pinellas County and Florence specifically. So one of the things I would, I would speak highly of Florence on is the fact that as a support effort to this general plan update, the town is also going forward with a water sustainability study. They have a consultant that was or is actively preparing that study. And so that study was used to help inform the general plan to ensure that as we look at growth, that we're taking water and making water sustainability in mind and making sure that what we're proposing can be supported as development occurs. And so one of the things that was addressed through this analysis is looking at some of the projected populations that we might see within the planning area and then identifying some of the water demands of that development to see if there was any necessary additional water resources that would need to be acquired to support that growth. And you can see over in the right-hand side of the column, specifically within the areas that relate to Florence, there isn't, in terms of being the water provider, they're looking out at, out to 2055, which Maricopa Association of Governments establishes population projections for the area. And they took that estimate out to 2055, or a population of 231,400. With that, we see that there is no additional need out to 2055 for obtaining additional water resources. That doesn't prevent Florence from going to get additional water over that time, but it is reassuring to know that Florence is in good shape in terms of supporting near-term development and has flexibility then to help be strategic as it acquires additional water resources moving forward. So as some of my closing comments, the last new item that we introduced into the general plan was an implementation chapter. This implementation chapter is, does not exist in the current general plan. And what it identifies are specific actions that can be undertaken by the community. Some may not necessarily be actions that would be undertaken by the town. They could be undertaken by community agencies within the Florence area. But this implementation table actually identifies those actions that help carry forward the goals and policies that are listed in the plan. So the focus of this effort was something that was expressed by the commission and council when we had our work sessions, to ensure that the plan had some level of measurability to it, that we could identify responsibility for those specific efforts, and that we can understand that if we conduct a certain action, how will that apply to achieving some of the goals within the general plan? Now, from that summary of the general plan, there are some specific items that we discussed in our last hearing that if the commission moves forward with your recommendation this evening, we would request that you consider some additional edits to the current public hearing draft as, as we take this forward to council. We identified those in your staff report and addressed them during our last meeting. So you can see the first here relating to some edits to page 28 to address some, some consideration for multiple density in residential housing for areas within the suburban neighborhood place type. We also looked at some, making some specific edits to some of the development policies to address a recognized typo, actually, in the policy guidance. We also identified a revision that had to be made to the general plan amendment criteria. It was a footnote that was left over from the previous general plan, so that footnote is being requested to be removed. But what I wanted to actually pause on a little bit more is, based off of our, our last commission meeting, there was some feedback requesting for some additional clarity. And so I wanted to clarify, for the commission's benefit, we heard and listened. And so in your staff report, and as you see on the screen, we did include or suggest a footnote to be included with Figure 3 to explain the differences in the population projections compared to the water analysis. So that would be carried out in Figure 3 as well as Table 2. And then the other item for discussion was looking, taking another look at that last sentence of the second paragraph in the Water Resources chapter. And so you can see on the screen how that entire sentence was struck and rewritten to hopefully be more succinct and clear in terms of its intent. From that, Chair and commissioners, I would just remind you that if we move forward, again, with the recommendation tonight, that that would go to the Town Council for a public hearing in final action on 5/16. There is a tentative consideration for a council work session on 5/9. And if all of that were to move forward as planned, the general plan would be put on the November 3 ballot for voter ratification. With that, Chair, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll open up to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, just a positive comment and appreciation of what you did to explain some of the numbers and make those changes that were brought up in the last meeting. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
I have no, no further comment.
Nothing.
Yeah. Then at this point, I'll open it up to the public. Would anyone like to address the commission? Name and address, please.
Does it need to go on?
It should be on.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. My name is Jennifer Ruby. I'm with Langley Properties. Our address for the record is 2738 East Guadalupe Road in Gilbert, 85234. I just wanted to take a brief moment tonight and on behalf of Langley Properties and specifically the Brimhall family, to thank the town for their investment in this work product. We think it's a robust plan. The public outreach effort by the town staff and by your consultant was fantastic. And we're really excited to see how this tool helps Florence grow over the coming years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the commission? Then I'll close to the public.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend to the Town Council adoption of the Town Florence General Plan 2022, Our Town, Our Future, with the recommendations identified in tonight's presentation.
Second. So I have a motion by Vice Chair Frost, second by Commissioner Capolongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. At this time, Ms. Benitez, presentation for information only, redevelopment of the Old Circle K at Butte and future agenda items. I'm all excited.
So this item was asked for by the commission in the last meeting. We currently have Empower Physical Therapy, redeveloping the Old Circle K at Butte in Main Street, or a specific address, 20 South Main Street. They are currently doing interior updates, and they have applied for a design review for the historic district to approve of their exterior. Surprisingly, the Circle K is considered part of the historic district and a historic building for its modern design. As the years go by, we see more and more of those. And Empower Physical Therapy is actually located further south on Main, but their lease is ending on the building they currently reside in. So they looked at the Circle K in order to continue their business in a building that they own. They have purchased the building and the land, and they've made sure the parcels, their two parcels, and they've made sure that they will never be split and that they work together to bring benefits to their business. So that, the exterior design review for the Historic District Advisory Commission will be next Wednesday. And we hope to see this business flourish in this building. That concludes that update.
Thank you. Anything else?
For future agenda items, as we stated, the continuance of that conditional use permit, not, yeah, the conditional permit will be on May 19th. We do have a major PUD amendment within the Anthem PUD. Notices have gone out already, people know, for another proposed storage area. Is this bad timing? Maybe, but that's not up to us. We just make sure things are working through the process. But that is also looking to come to the commission on May 19th.
On May 19th?
Correct. So I said, things just happened.
Is that it?
That is it.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, call it a public, call it a public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Instead of reading this whole diatribe, what it means is, you can address the commission, but if it's not on our agenda, we cannot reply or answer questions. We can, however, refer to staff for further work. So at this time, we are open to the public. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I sent.
Got to turn your mic on, sir.
Okay, had it on, it's not close enough to me. I sent you a memo last week about a temporary parking permit, I mean, temporary parking code. I'd like to see that brought forth as an agenda item, and I've given Mari copies for all the commission members tonight, so they can see what I sent to you. Is that in order, to get that on the agenda?
At this time, we cannot comment.
I understand.
Not on the agenda, so we will refer to staff for further. This is redundant, and we've got to put this to bed. So please, let's move forward and let this take whatever shape it has to take.
I will work with him.
Thank you.
Any other comments for? Okay, then I'll close to the public. Calls to the commission, current events only. Gentlemen?
Nothing here.
I live a very uneventful life, so I will close to the commission. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion that we adjourned.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Pro, second by Commissioner Capolongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? We are adjourned.